Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the planning board meeting of May 16th. And right now, I'd like to take a call to order, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Mr. Lucio. Christina, you here?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Foley? Yes, gotcha, Ms. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert is not here, Mr. Ollie.
I'm here.
Ms. Tenny.
Here.
Okay, I think we have Quam. So, first thing on the agenda, the board would like to acknowledge receipt of correspondence. And I'll just read them. A letter from Beth and Stephen Colbert, 9 C Street. Notice of decision, Town of Essex, 143 Main Street. Notice of decision, Town of Essex, 3R, Lufkin Street. Mill River Consultants, 102 Bridge Street. Notice of decision, Town of Wenham, 16 Large Row. City of Gloucester Public Hearing Notice, 115 Main Street. Town of Essex Planning Board Public Hearing, Article 14, amend, Chapter 6 of the Town Zoning Bylaws, Temporary Moratorium Business and Industrial Conversions. H Notice of Decision, Special Permit, Tapsfield Road. We've also received a letter to the board on May 3rd from Lorraine Iavoni, request for professional guidance on ADUs. I think all these correspondence, A through H, Sharon has posted in our meeting packet. And the Iavoni letter, I think, went to everyone individually. At this time, yes.
There was an email from Sarah Melish, should that be listed?
So, yeah, I think Chris only received, I think it went to you, Chris, and yep, I will list that. She had some concerns.
Do you run, though?
Yeah, I think it was to you, Ron.
Okay, to me, okay.
Ron sent it to me. And I called Sarah and had a chat with her about it, and I've written a draft response. I think right to Senator Ron and to Sue. Some of them need Mark Bobrowski's review, so hopefully you can do that quickly. Most of the concerns that she raised are, they're interesting, but they're not drastic. At least in my opinion.
Okay, acknowledge that, and we'll go over that at those comments at a later meeting, not prepared today on that. So, right now, I'll allow public comments, since there's no public, there's nothing to allow. Laura?
Just a question, I'm not seeing the correspondence in our meeting file, but perhaps I'm looking in the wrong place.
It might be in the meeting packet from last week, I think maybe it didn't get moved over.
I see.
No, it might have been in the, I guess, 59 packet. I think it's one file, but they're all scanned in there.
I see, thank you.
We'll move those over.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna hold on to parking study, if we vote, maybe Sue will join us, hopefully, if we stretch to six. The LCD overlay district next steps, that was also in Sue's wheelhouse. Although, Chris, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, let me just give a little bit of background on this, this was a study that we all started, I guess, we're got paused a year ago, when the SLV project became a hot button, so we just haven't done anything with this thing for, I guess, a year. We did look at draft design guidelines, and we had some discussions about that, so they're just sitting there. What I'd like to do is, with, I don't think it's neat, I guess I'm just gonna announce to the board, I'd like to finish this up and present a final draft of it to the board sometime after the town meeting. Probably not till the summer sometime. It's just gonna get shelved, it's not a, it's something we might use some language from later. But I think it's good just to get it over with, it's not gonna cost us anything, except a bit of my time, which I just as soon spend on it. So with no objection, that's the intention.
I might raise my hand button. I do, I mean, I think, I, I mean, I don't, I thought we voted not to go forward with this.
No, we haven't voted anything, it's just sitting there.
Ron, I checked the minutes, actually, of September, oh, the second meeting in September 2021, and we did vote, actually, to have this move forward. So, I was a little confused, Christine, as well as what, where it stood, but it, the minutes of, I think it's September 27th, do reflect that we said, let's go forward with this. Basically, as Chris said, it's MAPCs doing some work, we'll get some ideas from that. And so, I believe that's where it stood, but, but there was
it's appeared on the agenda in September.
I didn't look at any other, I don't know, I can't, I can't answer that.
I actually just recall actually talking to the Gloucester Daily Times reporter, because there was something in the paper, and that's, I'm recalling that we voted not to go forward with this, and the paper actually reported it incorrectly, rather recently.
I think we decided not to go forward with the 40R, per se, but not, not to stop.
Okay, okay, yeah, that might be it too, okay. There you go.
Mary? Mary?
Yeah, I would ask just to be a part of that, because I want to make sure that, I think the residents were very clear in their comments, and why we kind of shelled it to begin with, of their concern with housing up there. And I think, you know, with the most recent LCD vote for commercial, I think it's very clear residents strongly support commercial. So I, I just, I would like to be a part of that, since it is still in the planning board purview.
Sure, you're welcome to join, again, this is not a proposal to put any residential in the LCD. This is just to establish design guidelines and regulations for an overlay district.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, and I, yeah, and I appreciate that it's, it's just, I'm not really sure why we would, you know, just to shelve it, but that, you know, I just, it, you know, I just wanted to understand that we're really focusing on what residents have clearly stated that they want, and not kind of going, you know, where we started two years ago, we've come a long way since then, so let's just kind of focus on where we are.
So, you and Mary, Chris will come up with some draft, and then present it to the board at some subsequent meeting. Is that the thought?
That's fine, yeah, I'd like to work with Mary.
Okay, Laura?
Yeah, I think it's worth just having a sort of final outcome on this study, so even if it does sit for a while, we may come back and pick it up later and find that design guidelines are useful to put some other conditions on the way we want development to be, you know, kind of stewarded there, which, which may enhance what we can do for, you know, the sort of environmental footprint. So I think for that reason, it's useful to do a little thinking about this now, while the LCD is kind of fresh in our mind. Just to echo that, I think also, there is a residential portion of what, because we did have scenarios that had residential in it. Those could be, that those design guidelines could be moved to other residential areas in town, and we would learn for, oh, hadn't thought of that as a design guideline, whether it's regardless of districts, so I think we should go ahead and get it done.
Okay.
Well, is this, is this for LCD, or is this overlay? I mean, the, the grant and the funding was for LCD?
Yeah, and so it's now been changed and redirected just for overlay district in general.
So when was that changed?
When was that changed? I don't know, Sue was in contact with MAPC and told them to stop work on LCD, and this is just a completion of the study for design guidelines and regulations for an overlay district in general.
That's not what we agreed to. And this was a concern early on.
So that sounds like something happened that the planning board didn't really direct.
What would you like to do?
Well, I think, you know, this was clearly funded for an LCD overlay district project, and I don't know that, you know, and residents voted in funding for this, I don't, especially with it somehow changing scope without the planning board input, I, that concerns me greatly, and I think we've got to kind of bring it back and have a discussion as a planning board.
Well, we don't have time to do that, this thing is gonna run out in June, the end of the fiscal year.
The public hearing that we held, and the public that came to the public hearing, was very concerned that this would be conditioned to other locations in Manchester, and we, as a planning board, said at that time, we are going to start with the LCD, we'll see how it goes, you can see what this document looks like, and then maybe we can use it other places, this is not what we told the public we were doing.
I don't recall that conversation, but maybe we said that, if you like, we could just have it on the LCD and just leave it at that for now, that's fine.
It just sounds like things are happening behind the scenes without the planning board being involved.
Well, nothing was happening at all behind the scenes, it's been sitting there for six months.
But you just said that Sue had a conversation and changed the scope.
What she told them was that we were not going ahead with the 40R project in the LCD, which is what the board decided.
Correct.
So, that's what
But I think a overlay district in the LCD is gonna be different than a overlay district at Pleasant Street or downtown, so
Of course.
So I don't, this was intentional for the LCD, so just to have it on a shelf delay anywhere concerns me, because that's not what we discussed.
Would the design guidelines be different?
Well, I think people wanted commercial up there, so yes. We're not gonna have commercial at Pleasant Street.
Let's limit it to the LCD for now, and then we'll see what the board decides, if it wants to, you know, move this into other areas. That be acceptable?
Yeah. I just clarify, I don't think we're spending any money of our own, I think this is all MAPC technical assistance. It's my understanding that we, that this was all MAPC technical assistance, I don't believe we're spending any money. And Christina is right, that the, at least the September minutes, September 3rd, 27th, 2021, do talk about various scenarios which we came up with in the LCD, so I think proceed with the LCD as a, but it's a, I mean, they're transferable, is my point, you know, something that we learn in one. So I'll make a motion to complete the study as specified in the September 27th, 2021 minutes.
Putting it to the LCD.
That's what the, that's what the 27th, September 27th minutes
Just wanted to make sure those words were in there, yep, thank you.
Seconded. LCD.
Though the motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Sharon, are you understanding the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I just would like clarity that it's a collaborative effort, that, you know, if Chris and I are working on it, that it's collaborative with MAPC.
Yes.
Understood. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote on the mo, if there are any further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote on the motion, Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Ms. Ollie?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Sharon, that's 6-0 and 1 not present. So now, I'd like to get, have the board get an update of tomorrow's public hearing, and I'll turn that over for Sarah and Chris to just give the board on some insight on how we're gonna go forward tomorrow. What's been
Well, I put a memo, I sent you all an email and copied it into tonight's packet, so that's really the, almost the latest, with one exception. So there is, we have had three people proofread the draft PDFs, those changes have been edited and then translated into articles, because those were not quite articles, in terms of order, so Chris and I thought a little bit about what order they should be on there in the folder called Final, and that's not quite final, of articles for the, it says Summer Town Meeting. There's a order of articles, proposed order and a rationale for that. And then the draft, draft final articles as framed as articles are there. Tomorrow night, we have prepared a PowerPoint, they're still being a little bit revised, but it's, the draft is in that, wherever I told you it would be, the Public Communications folder as well, and certainly if you have comments, there's still some typos in that version, but happy to get any comments. We are gonna present that in, in brief tonight to the Board of Selectmen. Hoping that that won't turn into some sort of public hearing-like situation, because we're not quite ready for that. And I think we're pretty nearly ready for the public hearing tomorrow night, which starts at 6:30, not at 7:00. There's a quick link on every slide for the zoning, and the zoning changes have been at Town Hall for two weeks, and no people have requested looking at them, which tells me that most people are looking at them, if they are looking at them, they're looking at them online. And the only other thing I would say is that in, I sent you an email about this, did not put it in the folder. In proofreading the accessory dwelling unit language, I realized that when I accepted track changes, the issuing of the permit by the building inspector, by the building inspector, had been deleted. So I fixed that, because that's kind of important. And sent you all the new language, which is now framed as the warrant article. There was one other typo later in that about the reference to a section. The ADU section, what we did is we broke out, there was just one big long list of regulations that mixed the requirements on size and lot size and so forth with the performance, like owner occupied and that kind of thing. So we separated them out into two things, and when we did that, the reference to the, the former got lost. So anyway, the, the thing that looks like a real article with line numbers down the side is the ADU version, it should be on the website, it's at Town Hall. And that's the, really, the only confusing change, I think, that everything else is largely ministerial. The other thing is Mark Bobrowski is reviewing everything, we hope. And Chris, what else should I add, what else? I don't have that memo in front of me, so I'm
The point is that Mark is reviewing it, and he will be attending parts of public hearing and additional meetings with us to finalize it all. So far, he said that everything looks pretty good to him, which is a comfort, some comfort.
And Alan Wilson did read everything and provide. But actually, Helene did a very thorough. And oh, that if, I know the paper copies of Alan, Chris's, and Helene's review are at the park, the mailbox area at our Town Hall, if you want to borrow them, just let me know. If you want to see what actually was changed from the print copies, because we did, Helene did not do truck changes. So those print copies are available, and if you want to go get them and, and borrow them, please do. I am going to request a hard copy of the articles, probably after we make any changes in, from the public hearing, if you want a hard copy in addition to the electronic copies, as we approach a vote for the articles, please let me know. We can, when Sharon or Sue makes a copy for me, they can make a copy for you. So, I find hard copy to be useful in the final read.
Sarah, did you want to explain how we're going to take this in sections tomorrow, and then have a discussion, and then move on to the next section?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
And how that process is gonna work?
Yeah, a couple of things, we did clarify, I think I said this in the memo, that the chat's gonna be turned off, because it's impossible to people were in the LCD hearing making comments, and it's impossible to record those, and they think that they're making comments that we see and are paying attention to, so we're turning chat off. We're gonna take it section by section and get people's comments. And Chris and I talked a little bit about this today, is that we do expect that we'll hear from people that they are just flatly against the change, which is fine, and, or that they're for the change that we've proposed, and, and that's fine, that we don't have to have a debate about this, because this isn't a vote by the public that occurs at town meeting. So we'll, we'll hear what people have to say. And we did get clarity from both Town Council and Mark Bobrowski, that we don't have to actually ask, answer questions in the spirit of trying to help people understand the changes. We'll, obviously, I'll try to answer appropriately, but public hearings are actually, one can be construed as one way, just delivered from the public to us. That had come up at the LCD hearing, so.
That's what we want.
Well, I think we want to try to answer questions, it, it's my opinion that we want to try to answer questions to help people understand things, but if the questions are around intent or some sort of implying, if they're inflammatory, we don't have to address them.
Some questions might, we may not know the answer, in which case we can answer them in a future time, after we know the answer.
Right. Right, if we, if we get a lot of frequently asked questions that, that we don't know the answer to, we could, we could post those questions and their answers on the website, following up, is one way to do it.
The, the intent with Bobrowski's schedule is, I think he'll be joining us for the first half hour, and then he's gotta run off to some kind of meeting, and he'll be joining us again around 8, or is it 8:30?
Yeah, so we'll take the non-conforming.
We'll take the not, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, we'll take non-conforming use when he's there, because he, that's the one where he has the most important input. Ron, I think Laura has a question.
Yeah, Laura, go ahead.
Well, you partially just answered it, I was going to ask if Mark Bobrowski was gonna be there tomorrow, and if he is coming and going, is it helpful? I'm not sure how you have the presentation set up, Sarah, so I defer to you on your good judgment about that. Is it helpful while Mark's there in the first half hour to give people a roadmap of where we're going and why, or, or point them to the website, and then say that he'll be back, if there are any detailed questions we want his opinion on?
I think that's a good suggestion.
We were gonna take some of the more inane stuff, some of the real basic, non-controversial stuff during that time when he's not there. Simple, renumbering, definition, things.
I think Mary has her hand up.
Oh, Mary, sorry.
That's good. Just a question and a comment, so one, I guess, what's my, what's Mark Bobrowski's input on non-conforming? And then my, I guess, comment slash question is that I went on to the town website today, and you know, usually when there's public forums, there's some big color advertising on the front of the town webpage, and I don't think people know about this forum at all. So I'm hoping we can change that.
I know that Sue was gonna work on getting some social media, it is actually on the front page of the website, you have to scroll down a little bit, but there's a big Z that goes to zoning.
Is it also not in the cricket?
I think that just goes to the zoning recodification page, right?
Right, which has
It's always been there, I just mean, usually there's, you know, because they've got it for the COVID clinic, they've got it for beach tags, they usually do it for forums, or I'm sorry, public hearings. So I would like to see something on the town website regarding this, but then my, my other question is
Yeah, yeah, let me ask you a question about the non-conforming use. So I think we took Mark Bobrowski's proposed language pretty much in its entirety for the non-conforming use section. So, and then we gave it back to him with all of the other proposed, or I gave him the articles, not just the, the section by section, which have all the deletions and everything else, it's just reordered a little bit. When I say that, what I mean is we suggested we're deleting certain sections that are gonna go to the general bylaws after the general bylaws are passed, and we had it as a separate article in the final, in the near final version, for example. So the question for him is, you know, did we properly and legally represent what our obligations are under the non-conforming use? So, I think it's a review of what he had already seen, what we've already, what's out there, I didn't change anything, so.
Oh, I thought you said that he had, he had strong input on the non-conforming.
He, no, in terms of presenting to the public, he's the best verse, he's, he is well-versed in that section, he, I would say he's more well-versed in that section than any of the others. However, we did decide that he won't be the presenter. The presenter will be some combination of us, anybody, you know, sort of obvious who's been working on various sections, although Gary's away, so we're not sure what his availability is, and we'll try to represent ADUs, but if so, the, the thought is that we will present, I will present most of them, Chris will do the rationale, and then we'll collectively answer questions. So, but, and then Mark, if there are specific questions, we would direct them as specific questions to Mark, in, for two reasons, one is to try to answer his, get the specific questions or comments answered, and secondly, to keep him on, keep him focused in his presentation. We'll see how it goes, let's do the best we can.
Laura?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that, that from the town administrator's desk, the blog that Greg writes, that came out on May 13th, I get it on my phone, but I think it gets posted other ways as well. Mentions, also next Tuesday, May 17th, beginning at 7:00 PM via Zoom, the planning board holds formal hearings on proposed zoning changes that are slated to come before voters at a town meeting, et cetera, et cetera, so it has gone out that way.
It says 7:00 PM.
It says 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 17th. Are we starting at 6:30?
So at least people can tune into 7, that's okay.
Yeah, so people do it at 7, yeah, that's unfortunate, I just noticed that, but it is being promoted anyhow.
I, I hear you, Laura.
On the website.
But other towns use our signs, and they, they use that, we had flushing water.
Yeah.
It was like I could add some other information to these, yeah, this is important.
Yeah.
I think we need to do a better job. So I guess on the ADUs, Ron, if I may speak to that, we've never had a conversation as a board about this, this has changed, Gary was here, ready to present, you said, hold on, I want the other people to come. We've never actually talked about it, so a whole other change.
No, we put it at last meeting when you weren't here.
Oh.
Yep, no, that's fine, but Yep. No, that's fine. But.
Okay. So I guess I need to look at the minutes and. Okay.
Just one more thing on where it's publicized. So it also came out in the tide, which came a day or two before. And that says, planning board, public hearing, May seventeenth at six thirty PM to continue to May eighteenth if needed. So it's getting well-publicized, but with mixed messages about what time it starts.
It is a button that's new on proposed zoning updates on the front page, which takes you to the zoning updates. And if you scroll down, there's a whole section about what, what it is. And then at the very bottom is the zoning changes with the actual link to the proposed changes. Now, if I were doing it, I would have put those at the top, but you know, we don't, we don't design the website is the problem. We don't, we, you know, it's not our, we're, we're working with, you know, people who have a lot of other things going on. So doing the. So. And I put, you know what, I'll put, sorry to interrupt you, Ron. I will put a screenshot of where people can go to find this on the, on the first slide. And Chris and I talked about maybe repeating that a couple of times during, in case you're just joining us, here's where you can find the, the text. So.
And it does also say, public hearing, May seventeenth at six thirty, right at the header of the zoning recodification and updates. So it's there too. So it's right in six thirty, two places that I've seen.
My only comment is that, you know, it's usually on the front page of the town website. And I think unless somebody knows to go to the zoning recodification webpage on the town website, you're just not really seeing it.
It hasn't been on the town, you know, Facebook page or any kind of social media. Just, I mean.
Sue, I see you're, you've joined us. Did you have any comment on the social media business?
Yeah, it has been on the, it has been on the town Facebook page. I just, I just scrolled down through it and found it. So Tiffany's aware that we want to get the word out and she has been posting that out there. And I know that the Cricket's Facebook page has also been doing that.
As soon as, is that why your hand was up?
It is.
Okay. So the intent, we hope we can get through this all tomorrow and then close the hearing and then collectively respond to any of the comments that we received tomorrow and make any kind of notes or changes. But if we, it may, we may stretch into Wednesday. So just be aware of that.
Can I just ask a quick question to get people's sense? What do you think at nine o'clock tomorrow night, taking a five-minute break, letting everybody go stretch? And putting up maybe a slide that says, taking a break, we'll be right back and, you know, at nine oh five to kind of give people a moment to, to stretch and, and in hopes that we might be able to get through it in one night.
I think that's a great idea.
I do too. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. And then the other thing is if we, the near final articles are what we need to vote. Each one of them needs to be amended to say per petition of the planning board. That's one change that I know needs to go on every one of them. So that is what we'll be voting. So as the content is essentially the same as the PDFs that you all have, but they are in that folder as documents. So if you make any changes, you know, we'll be working from those to, to approve those. I'm hoping that we've got them in pretty, pretty good shape. We really don't want to amend these things on town meeting floor except to, you know, we don't want to fix errors on town meeting floor. We want to try to have them right. But I'm sure there'll be something that we've overlooked, but you know, amendments we can expect for content, but that was, that's where we can, if anybody has a question about where to find them, let me know and I'll point you to them.
Thank you, Sarah. Mary?
Yeah, just, Ron, I had sent you an email about the blasting earth removal. That's not at the June town meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
So it's going to, so what we currently have is what's staying. And that's the same with like floodplain and all the other ones that we haven't gotten to.
That's right.
And then are all of these going to be separate articles at town meeting? So the way you have it in the folder, those are going to be separate votes at town meeting?
Sarah, you're on mute.
Right now, we have, if you want to share my, if I can just share the screen, Ron. I just put it in the screen for the selectmen. Nope, still. Oh, has. And I still can't share.
Well, I gave you one. Right in.
There we go. Um, so these are the eleven articles. This is from, this list is in that folder called final articles. Uh, one, two, three, four together. Then we're going to amend the general bylaws. That makes sense. Because the deleting the sections like junk cars and so forth then are reflected, you know, deleting junk cars is reflected in the rewrite of, I think, section six. So we've sort of thought through this, then renumbered, just the, this is just a simple renumber, six, six, one to seven. I can see a problem with that already. We have to renumber seven to twelve, two, I think is in that article. And we take twelve, then back to six, seven, eight. And we put ADUs at the end. We can talk about that. It's, this is my opinion about the best order in terms of making sure we get our priority sort of reorganization stuff done. Because that's, that's holding us back from doing other things, in my opinion. And if there's a quorum called or something like that, then we want to have these top things dealt with. So happy to argue that another way of people have other thoughts, but that's the plan. It's in that final.
Are you going to put the required voting next to the rest?
I should, yes. I, I got tired.
Understood.
Good idea. Yeah, thank you.
I know, everything needs to be two-thirds, right? There's nothing that says, which one has, that's what I was trying to get getting at. Which one needs? Which one?
ADU.
ADU is fifty percent.
And the rest are all two-thirds.
Because it's housing?
Multi-family.
But ADUs are not multi-family.
No, it's not multi-family. It's, it's called out in the, in the state law that it.
Oh, it is called out specifically, but that's what I wasn't sure. Do the, does the senior, the senior doesn't need it?
Apparently not. I, I would think it does. It should because the state is encouraging any kind of housing. But according to Bobrowski, it doesn't. It's going to require two-thirds vote.
Okay. So right now, the only one that needs fifty percent is the ADO.
Apparently, yes.
Alan asked Mark to weigh in on that specifically, and we haven't heard. I don't.
It'd be nice if we could see these conversations. I feel really out of the loop, to be honest with you.
Happy to share the comment we, the email we sent to Mark.
Thank you.
The files that I will forward are the same exact files that are in that directory on SharePoint.
Okay. And do these correspond to any of the Bobrowski invoices?
Not yet. I believe with those invoices for his prior work.
Yeah, let's, that is the next item. Are we done with?
I think I don't have anything else to add. Better stop.
Any other comments? Because we're running a little late. I've got fifteen minutes. So the next, any more comments on this from the board? The next item is we received, we, I'm looking for about approval of the Bobrowski invoice. It's, one is for two point four hours on the zoning workshop he attended on January thirty first. And one is for two point two hours, review of materials and meeting on February eighth. His billable rate is two fifty an hour. Subtract, it was a sixty-five hundred dollar budget. We're subtracting these two invoices. It now leaves us with fifty-three, fifty-three hundred, fifty dollars or twenty-one more hours of Bobrowski time available to us once we approve this invoice. Sue, you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I just got a, I just received another invoice. And I, maybe it's not up there yet, but let me find it and I will tell you what it is for.
Okay, but tonight we're voting on this invoice, these two invoices, correct? Or do you want to, you want to vote on the, want to vote on the third invoice?
Yes, if you don't mind. Let me find it though.
Okay. Do you want to put it on screen or do you want to just tell us?
I'm having trouble multitasking. I'm happy to tell you, it just might take longer for me to do it on screen, but let me just find it first.
I think we're approving these invoices, Ron. I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
I can't find my, I have a question. I, I just wanted to address you first. Go through you. May I ask a question?
Yes.
So with the invoices, I guess I would like some more clarity and what exactly was submitted for questioning where that answer is. I feel like I'm approving an invoice with, I'm, I'm unsure what clarification is. So could we get copies of what the email and correspondence was?
They're billing us for attendance at meetings.
No, that's, no, that, there's other, there's two specific lines of opinions. So I would like the opinions.
The, the descriptions I have is zoning workshop on January thirty first. I think Chris is right. That's attending that workshop. And then the other two point two, at least the least two is review of materials and meeting on two eight. Both for around two and a half, two. So I don't know if there was any written correspondence regarding that, Sue, anything?
So Bobrowski invoices are a Zoom appearance and receipt and review email of S. Brown reply. And then planning board workshop. So I would like to be in the loop again on replies. And somehow loop these back to the invoices.
There's no, so there wasn't any written documentation that he responded to in writing.
Receipt and review email of S. Brown reply.
Yeah. So when I write to, when I send him an email and ask him to review something, which Sarah has been providing stuff for him to review the sections, he's just saying he's reviewing that. So in response to our request that he review it, he's reviewing those sections. So that's what that is. The other invoice, Ron, I found it. Now I've lost it. Hold on. Contract to number three, or no, hold on. Oh, invoice number three is for receipt and review email of S. Brown point seven oh and Zoom appearance, planning board workshop on four, four.
So where is the reply?
Total is five fifty.
How many hours was that? Was he?
So it's points, yes, it's one point five. So it's a total of two point two hours for this invoice as well.
So I guess, again, my question is, where's the reply?
So he has not replied in writing for, for any of these. So we've had meetings. He has not provided anything in writing in terms of a review of any particular section. He's reviewed and then has opined on those at the various meetings that we've been to.
That's not what the invoice says.
I think you're misreading it.
I'm reading exactly what it says. Reply. Receipt and review email of S. Brown, colon, reply.
Well, I'm telling you that there's not a, there's not a reply from him that explains anything. But I will check. Mostly, we've sent things to him and asked him to review them. And I am going to do a quick search for Bobrowski.
In the meantime, Laura, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm just feeling like that this is not a productive use of the planning board's time. I'll do respect to Christina and wanting, you know, she can ask and get questions answered, but if Sue is managing a consultant's time and Sue meets with Greg and gets whatever, you know, reviews and oversight, she needs to sign off on, on invoices. I don't personally feel that we need to be getting into the terminology of what every invoice says. I mean, he, he's a consultant who's doing work for us, Sue's overseeing the work. And Sue also has her own manager to report up to. So I, I just, I'm sorry, I don't feel like this is a terribly useful, we're going around in circles and I, and I think it's not a good use of the planning board's time respectfully.
Thank you, Sarah. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to approve the invoices as submitted. Provided Sue confirms appropriate reply as reflected in said invoice.
So your, your motion is to approve invoices one, two, and, and what we heard tonight, invoice three?
Yes, provided, provided that she had, said she checks the hours of attendance on the meetings and the reply as, as noted.
I guess I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
With all due respect, if we're voting on this, I think we should have more clarification. It's my opinion. But I am ready to vote.
Any further discussion on the motion? Sharon, are you, Sharon, are you good on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so roll call vote, Ms. Foley?
I will abstain since I voted no on the, the renewal of the contract.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Mr. Only?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Mr. Lucio?
No.
And Chair votes yes. So that is a four, one, one, Sharon.
Right.
Motion passes. Um, so we're very, we're running a little late. I didn't, the, the thing Sue, that we didn't get to, we were waiting for you, was the parking study and what this is is Greg is looking for our support for the study where Sue Brown is the project manager and will assure coordination with all the appropriate boards, committees and staff. So we're, Greg is looking for our endorsement as Sue for the project manager. Do I have that right, Sue?
Um, yes, I would say that he's looking for confirmation that the approach that he has with he, him overseeing it. I'm working as the project manager in coordination with all the other boards, committees and departments. As basically as laid out in the memo that he sent a couple of weeks ago.
So do I hear a motion from the board to endorse?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, I would like to have us, this is a great project that we all, I think, feels important. I like to just work with Sue on a kind of a regular update, which is, you know, goals, milestones, amount expended, you know, upcoming tasks that maybe it's not necessarily every one of our month, meetings, but monthly. I'd be happy to work with Sue on just a template. I'm thinking a one pager. It's nothing elaborate.
Okay, to do that. And the first training is, the volunteer training is actually going to be scheduled for, I think. And the first training is, the volunteer training is actually going to be scheduled for, I think it's tentatively scheduled for this Thursday at three o'clock, if anyone is interested. I think I sent that to notice to Ron to send out to anyone who wanted to join. It'll be a Zoom training. Anyone doesn't have that link and wants it, let me know.
Do you have volunteers?
Um, yes. And I have not confirmed how many have signed up.
Did you ask for volunteers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Through this board?
Yes, I sent out an email to everyone, I think a while back.
Timer set. I didn't receive that email.
I'll resend it. I think I did.
Would love to have some folks from the planning board attend, so that they understand how the, how the counts are being done. And if we should ever want to redo it, we'll have a little bit of knowledge to help us out.
So the training, that was my question. The training is about how to do the parking count specifically, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's on Zoom. I can put it on my calendar. Right now I can try to attend. Assuming nothing else bumps it.
Sounds great.
Okay, thanks.
Christina?
Well, I guess I have a, obviously I have a concern about this parking study. But, you know, the MAPC came, they presented to us, they gave us some ideas, and we gave some ideas back. And I don't see any of this incorporated into this presentation. So did nothing come back? The MAPC took away nothing? None of our comments or concerns were incorporated into this new scope of work. And my other thing is that the proposal that we proposed to the MAPC was supposed to incorporate the effects of the LCD being developed and specifically modeling the impacts of fifty, one hundred, two hundred new housing units. None of this information that we talked about it as a board that we presented to MAPC is incorporated into what, this isn't what we asked for. So, and what we are endorsing at the end of this is the MBTA community, which I'm really concerned about going forward with this proposal as is. Because I feel like we're saying that, yes, we are designing and we're going to go forward with this parking study because we endorse the MBAT, MBTA zoning. So where are we? It's fine that Sue wants to be the project manager, but there's still some concerns about what the scope of work entails. And I know the town voted for twenty thousand dollars, but they didn't, they didn't vote on a scope. So I am concerned about the scope. So when is, when is our voice, is the planning board that has been asking for this project for the last four years, going to be able to weigh in on this? And my other concern about the LCD and the interviews was that we still haven't seen Sue, who you spoke to, the results of those conversations. So I would like to see a script, and I would like to see those conversations, you know, memorialized and distributed. I don't want to go through, you know, not having those conversations again. Seeing those results of the conversations.
Mary, any discussion?
I didn't, did anybody want to answer Christine's questions, or no? So, oh, I lost my train of thought. I wanted to ask if, because I didn't see it in the study. Do we have the basic baseline of getting the data of how many cars we have registered in Manchester and in what districts? I think that would be a good starting point, so we know how many cars we're currently dealing with. I think I voiced prior my concerns with this parking study to some of Christine's points. Is it, it has not taken planning board input and incorporated it? So I'm not clear why the planning board is being asked to, I guess, approve it.
Sarah, any comments?
I think that Christine is accurate that she suggested certain additional scope, but I do not think we agreed to that scope as a board. I think that it was pretty clear from when MAPC came that this was a downtown sort of current conditions, um, scope, and that they have the, they do these studies. So we should probably not second guess how they do that. That said, I I can't seem to open the study on my computer for some reason. And I do think that one of the suggestions that we made was the inclusion of Mascanoma Park and some other lots that I can, that are considered in the downtown. So I hope that those did make it into the scope. And so Sue, maybe you can just answer that question. Did those additional lots make it into scope? The MAPC rep was kind of reluctant to do that, saying, oh, it would add a lot of work. But absent, you know, including Mascanoma Park and Behind Town Hall, it's my opinion that you're not getting the full picture.
Mascanoma Park was always part of the scope, so that is in there. They did have a question of whether Singing Beach should be in it. They're happy to put those in there. They're happy to include all of the areas, parking areas in the downtown. They did actually change their scope a bit after listening to it, although I don't think a lot of scope change was required. I think what we confirmed is the public process that would go along with the study just didn't require a change in the language of the scope. They did change the date, the time of the, of the collection of the second, the summer meeting. They had originally used a shorter day and they went to a larger day. So they did take notes and they did change the scope to reflect what was agreed upon. And yes, Mascanoma, Behind Town Hall, all of those are in. And if we choose, we can include Singing Beach in as well.
Just remind you, Ron, I made a, had made a motion to have Sue be the project manager and to work with her on a regular monthly report, and perhaps some of Christine's questions could be addressed with that. Since the study, some, for example, one of the first tasks was resident interviews. Those could be reported out as part of the next monthly report. So I reiterate my motion to have Sue be the project manager as requested.
And you would work with her on that. So that's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Tenny.
Yes, I support moving forward with the parking study.
Mr. Alny?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Foley?
I one thousand percent support a parking study. I do not support this one. No.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
No.
And Chair votes yes. So it's a four to two, Sharon, and the motion passes. Okay, it's time, almost time for select boards. I don't think they're taking us up till maybe an hour in, but I'll check their minutes. But one last thing, we have approval of regular minutes, meaning regular meeting minutes. March twenty first, April fourth, and April eleventh. I believe these were all in the packets. Any comments or comments on any of the minutes? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve. Has everyone read the minutes?
Yes.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll move they be approved as written.
Oh, sorry, Laura.
Sorry, I made one text edit for clarity in the SharePoint document. I can read it here if that's helpful. It is on the three twenty one minutes. What it says now is Ms. Tenny stated one word, wield or track, spelled T R A C T. That's incorrect. And if we could change it to, Ms. Tenny said add the words wield or tracked, T R A C K E D.
Okay, Sharon, you have that?
Yes.
Thank you, Sharon.
Ms. Foley?
I have about a dozen on the March twenty first. Do you want me to go through them here or email them? No, why don't you email them to me, Mary?
Well, the board should know. Are they my, are they, are they any substantive? Will the board, the board want to vote on these without knowing what they are?
It, it's, 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 it's not substantive, I can't say that word, so it has me too. It's, it's like sentences that just kind of don't make sense that, you know, have extra words or, you know.
So grammatical changes.
Grammatical, I guess one would be even like staff present, it's saying planning board clerk, but I think we need clarity that. Because I think Gary Gilbert is the planning board clerk.
Correct.
And so Sharon has a different title.
Administrator.
Yeah, so, so yeah, extra words and Ms. instead of Mr., vice versa, and those types of things. And then I just have one for the April eleventh.
My suggestion is that Mary submits these changes and the board accepts them.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that. Mr. Alny was present on the May, March twenty first meeting. So that concerns me because I made a bunch of changes on this one and track changes, and they've disappeared in the meeting that they first appeared in.
No, they didn't. I was going through my minutes, going through emails, and it went into my spam email. I don't know how it went in there, but I just noticed them today. So I will make those track changes.
Okay, but the changes are not, are no longer visible on the SharePoint document that I edited, and Chris Alny being present was one of them. So my guess is that they are redundant with Mary's changes, because they were. So. When.
Can I vote? Can we move that Sarah and Mary get together with Sharon and correct these anomalies in the minutes? For, is it a specific?
March twenty first has a lot of grammatical errors still, and things don't make sense.
How about the other two? Can we just approve the other two and hold off on that one?
Yeah, that's fine.
I just have, I have one for the April eleventh.
Go ahead, Mary.
It's on page four.
We didn't meet on April eleven. Oh, no, sorry. We, I'm looking at the board's selectmen. Sorry.
Page four. Fifth paragraph. Kind of the middle of the paragraph, it says, he is hopeful town council with agree with. So just change with to will.
Sharon, do you have that?
Yes.
So. Go ahead, Christina.
I'll wait till we're done, after we vote.
So I will. So we, we had a motion to approve the minutes as amended, but we will take that off the table. Sharon, am I doing that right? I just vote the minutes for April fourth and April eleventh as amended. Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second it.
So any further discussion on the April fourth, April eleventh minutes? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Mr. Alny?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So April fourth, April eleven as amended. Three twenty one, we'll review for next meeting, which is next week. So it shouldn't be that big of a deal. So let's get, let's get those done. So I think we need to jump to the select board meeting. But Christina, you have your hand up?
Really quickly, yeah. The minutes still are not posted from the beginning of the year. There's nothing posted yet.
We are working.
There are several minutes that are posted from the beginning of the year.
I'm looking at the website right now. They are not, there's nothing.
I thought you were working with Tiffany on that.
They are, they are, there are some posted. I can give you the dates if you would like.
Nothing since January twentieth.
So, okay, so.
Sue, you're on mute.
Sorry. So, yeah, so what I was able to track down was the ones that were missing in November, September, November, December, and the first of January. We have not, we're still waiting, or I'm still looking for the ones from February and some in March. So we've made progress. We still have a little work to do.
Does anyone know, do we need to do minutes if the recordings are there?
Yes, I believe, I believe we still need to post minutes, Sharon.
Yes, we do. They, uh, two, two years ago, they actually, we town meeting voted in that Article eleven, I think it is, or thirteen. That, once we approve meeting minutes, they're supposed to be posted within seven days. It's fourteen. Our general bylaws say seven, but.
In either case, it's not been happening. So I, we've been on it. I've been, there's been issues. I am on it, guys, and we're moving, you know, Greg's been told. There is an issue. So we're moving in that direction. So. Understood. All are good points.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second that motion. And just to you, is that seconded?
Second.
A roll call vote, Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Mr. Holley?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
And the Chair votes, yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for showing up. We'll see you tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Bye.
Bye now.